Let us know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
We're ready, okay. Motion to call the meeting to order?
A second. Trusty Marshall?
Aye.
Trusty Coe?
Aye.
Trusty Lyketh?
Aye.
Trusty Lampier?
Aye.
Mary Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Is there any board member that has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding this workshop? No, I'm sorry?
No, it's okay. The only question I have is, so my plan is to rent the place that Holly's acquiring in long-term, not short-term. So does that prevent me from having a conflict?
You just disclosed something, so, you know, it's up to you to determine whether or not you feel conflicted about what you're working on, but you have disclosed this in terms of transparency with the public, and thank you for that.
Good, don't feel conflicted.
Okay, so you're on the record. That's really how we would do that, okay?
Do I have to do that every time?
Uh, yeah.
You can talk to Jeff about that, too.
Yeah, you could ask him.
I think he'd be willing to advise us about conflicts of interest.
Okay, good enough, thanks.
But, I mean, you know, I mean, when I think about it, we have the rental registry already, and you'd be part of that, specifically, not this, so.
Okay.
But appreciate your disclosure, okay. Anybody else?
No.
I do not.
I do not? Okay. With that being said, click notes or the reading of the open meeting.
I'm better prepared this time.
Oh, you have your notes, okay, thank you.
The public will have the opportunity to comment on specific items. They must step forward in front of the room if they're physically able to in person. If an attendee is participating via web conference or through Zoom, please use your Q and A and raise your hand. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. Limit their remarks to three minutes on a given topic. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, this afternoon, this is a workshop. It is not a public hearing in any way, shape, or form. It's a workshop, our second one, that we've had publicly regarding short-term rentals. For those of you that aren't clear what short-term rentals are, the brand names are Airbnb or Verbo, just to kind of get everybody in the same place here. We have directed our attorney to draft some legislation, and we've had some discussions already, obviously, within the board and input from the public. We are continuing to do so, and that's what this workshop is here this afternoon. That's what it's for. So with that being said, hi, Jeff.
Hello.
Right on time, we're just gearing up. We do have a hard stop at 5:30, and Alexandria will be keeping time and reminding the board. So first up is our continuing discussion of short-term rental parameters. Yes.
Oh, you felt like I was about to say?
Oh, no, no, your hand moved. I saw it on the corner of my eye, and I'm like, I can come up with jumping in.
I can.
You can always come up with something, I know that, right. Okay, okay. Anybody want to jump in?
I will.
Okay, Lisa's going to jump in.
Okay, so I still have trouble with the 155-1 legislative intent. I think that the way it's written is confusing. We kind of state a couple things over twice in this paragraph. I think it's just not, it doesn't flow for me. I think I would like to see, well, again, I think I would like to see protect the historic character and integrity of the residential neighborhoods, maintain affordability, ensure economic stability, preserve housing stock, minimize traffic, noise, and trash. I think it needs to just be very concise, and then while still supporting tourism, or while still supporting increased traffic to business. Because I think it's just, I just think it's confusing, and like, for instance, where it says ensure that the value of housing is tied to its use, that basically is a nugget. Says the same thing as use of their private property for short-term rentals on a limited basis. I just think it's wordy. So I would like to see it a little bit more concrete.
How about if I take a stab at it?
Good.
And I'll send it out to everybody?
Okay, with me.
Oh, didn't you send this to Jeff?
Well, I did, but can you take a look at it, too?
Oh, I got a post-it.
Yes, you got a little post-it.
There we have it, posted. Starting off with post-its.
Just to add to that, so the legislative intent, if I'm not mistaken, is everything that comes behind it, it's essentially what's stated in your intent that creates the defensible position based on what we see throughout New York State law and village law, right?
It really is, it's the basis of why you're doing a legislative.
But it has to be grounded in, or founded in, the context of some law or some things that you, so, for example, things like, okay, so when we hear health, welfare, and safety, those are pretty common terms for a legislative.
That's the police power. You know, it's only the police power to do whatever you're, if you're doing. When you say you feel it's in the, it's health, safety, and welfare of your residents, that's an implication of police power to do what you're doing.
Okay, what about preserve the character and integrity of residential neighborhoods? That's just in a right for municipality to do, or is that something physical in that as well?
That is just what you're trying to do to accommodate.
And doesn't intent, correct me if I'm wrong, it can express the values, or things that we value in our communities?
Well, actually, it should also echo something from the contract law.
Well, that's, you know, that's where, I mean, this could easily be directed at it, so.
I see the intent as somebody saying, why are you doing this? Why is the board spending all this time doing this? And to me, this intent is justification as to why this feels important, to spend time on putting some regs together. That's the way I look at it.
Okay, so, anything else you want to, anything, anybody wants to add into that, just email it to me, and, you know, we'll do a little words and thing, and float it back, how's that? Okay, yeah. We've received an email, just this afternoon, I think it was, and in it, at that very paragraph, was one of the discussion points, and that I refer to the June 10th email from a village resident, and it said, I've read through the proposed chapter, and I think you each have a copy in front of you. So point number one speaks exactly to what you've brought up, so I'd like the board to maybe have a discussion point regarding that point, since we're talking about that legislative intent. Okay, so you want to, okay, so what I see in point number one is an opinion from a resident, you know, and that's an opinion, and more than welcome to, we thank residents for weighing in with their opinion. And just so the public knows what we're talking about, it's a letter received from a resident who has looked at the draft legislation, and, I'll read it. While the legislative intent sounds logical, I think it misses the mark by a mile, I think, in, you know, opinion. You are degrading the character of the neighborhood by allowing STRs in the first place. It's an opinion, and I think it's, you know, certainly valid for his concerns and what he's interested in conveying to the board.
I think that, so, from my perspective, our perspective is being set here, and I'm hoping that what the board is considering with the owner-occupied option for short-term rentals, it would, that it would address that concern. I think that the main concern was for non-owner-occupied short-term rentals, and I think what we're proposing with this legislation would answer that concern, in that owners would be on the property at home, and the primary residence, and short-term rentals would only be allowed a certain number of days per year.
But I think the letters drafted addressed that.
So I think that we're trying, we are attempting to address that.
Am I missing something on that? Does anybody want to weigh in that the draft, I thought the draft addressed that, based on the input that we gave to our attorney?
I have, I have.
Can I say something?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm trying to say that we are trying, attempting to address that.
Right, so, again, he's entitled to his opinion, but I think, again, you very cogitively pointed out that this legislation, this draft, looks at that and gives a different context, yes, yeah.
I would just simply say, I think in this statement, he may imply that all, anything in the short-term rental in a residential district is a degradation of the character of the residential neighborhood, whether or not it's owner-occupied or not. He doesn't delineate between the two. So I could take his statement as, okay, that's true, but...
Just opinion about all of them.
Should I feel differently about owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied, then his statement would apply.
I've got to comment as well, so I think we're, what is...
Justin had some.
No, go ahead, you were in there before me.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I think that, I think what might clarify this is, under the definitions, what we don't have, and this was something that I really wanted to bring, or I brought up last time, we have hosted, right, the definition of hosted, but we don't have unhosted. And I think that even though we've decided that we're not going to do, yeah, but we're talking about...
About the same thing.
Right, so we've got to make sure that those are, you know, the same. If we're going to say unhosted, then we've got to say, I mean, if we're going to say hosted, then owner-occupied, see, that needs to have another, well, unhosted would mean, well, unhosted is owner-occupied, right?
No.
No. So what is, what is the definition for a business that comes in, buys up houses, and just uses them, uses them as a business? That would technically be unhosted. We want to put something in there saying that we do not permit that.
Yeah, so in this instance, the way this was drafted, and Jeff, you could speak to it differently, or similarly, I think, understanding this, is identifying what is permitted, and then sort of everything else is everything else. So if you identify what is hosted, then unhosted is everything else. If you identify what owner-occupied is, then everything else is not owner-occupied.
So don't you think we should have a definition there to just make that statement? Because I think that that people may assume.
I don't mind having the additional definitions.
I should think of clarification.
Yeah, go ahead, you were next, yeah.
Sure, no, it's fine. Along the lines of the definitions, so currently, we have an allowance for hosted short-term rentals, right? Now, there's the case where you have a house that's divided into two, and you have two totally separate units, and it's not the case where you're renting out a room anymore, and you're occupying the property somewhere, but you've got a whole other self-contained apartment unit that is then permanently available for. So basically, by allowing that by right, you allow every multi-unit building in the village to have other units be occupied by STR. And I wonder...
It would have to be in the business district.
So...
It would have to be, it could only, it could only be in the business districts, because that's, because you would be renting, that's, that is a residential unit. So if you can't, if you're not, if there's no owner-occupied, then you can't rent. So doubles, if you have a double, the owner would have to be in both doubles. It's simply impossible.
Because even though we say single-family residence, does that...
Single-family residence is one house in which one family lives.
Right, so, in a case where there are several units in one building, I think there's one on Lincoln, one on State, is that building itself considered a single-family residence? And within that single-family residence?
No, if there's two, if there's more than one residential unit...
It's a multifamily.
Then it can only exist in the business districts.
Okay.
And where else you define it?
Can we talk briefly on that?
Because you can't, you can't have a single-family residence hosted unless someone is living there.
So within a multifamily...
Right.
They would have to be renting out a room, for instance, in their apartment?
You could only do that in the business districts.
Gotcha.
Because the residential units, I'm sorry, the residential districts only allow hosted single-family.
Oh, right.
And, right, hosted single-family, and maybe, I can't remember, but I think that, I think that there, we also allow the unhosted owner-occupied, in the residential. So it still means that an owner would have to be occupying the unit that is used for a short-term rental.
And because it's a single-family residential dwelling, there's only one unit?
No, because it's, the legislation says that STRs can only be, involve single-family residents or single-family units, then the distinction within all of that is made between hosted and owner-occupied. So you can't, you can't rent a room. You can't, in anything, in all the residential units or districts, you cannot rent an unhosted, non-owner-occupied residence at all.
And also, that would then apply to VCB outside of the TDD, right?
Right.
Right, so that's State Street. So if you've got a two-unit apartment at State Street, up and lower, it can't be...
So let's, let's talk about...
So that are all keys on the definition of residential unit, single-family.
Is that definition consistent throughout all of our zoning code? Okay.
Because I feel noticed in the definitions, I refer back to the definition of the zoning code.
Okay, so let's ask a question. We've got an accessory dwelling unit, could be a dwelling garage.
So let's say we have an accessory dwelling unit, or what is currently, I think that's the only way it would exist. I'm thinking about my neighbor who's got a barn in the back, and if ever they were to want to convert that to an Airbnb, they would not be able to, according to what we have in front of us, right?
What's owner's looking?
Residential.
No.
They wouldn't be able to, and that's, and that's because the...
But they could have a long-term rental.
Yeah, they could have a long-term rental.
Yep, so remind me again, in this code that we've got in front of us, what would prevent that? Specifically, the definition of owner and owner-occupied?
Residential dwelling.
It also says, if you look at 154...
Please silence your cell phone.
Excuse me, if you look at 154, I think, four, sub-paragraph A, anything that's not permitted by this, you can't do it.
Okay.
So you can't have a short-term rental anywhere else other than what's permitted here.
Yeah, by virtue of the fact that it's left out.
Right, I mean, it says it's strictly prohibited.
Yeah, can't do it.
You define what short-term rental is.
But it's...
Well, you've defined what dwelling is.
Yeah.
So that cuts it all out.
Yeah, but it's interesting what you already say, because there's so many apartments in the village that have little apartments.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, mine does.
But they'll have, they'll have to be a long-term.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, it would have to be a long-term.
Yeah, and there's been communities throughout the country where they had permitted accessory dwelling units, but as a result of very open-ended short-term rental laws, people went in and just started submitting for development accessory dwelling units with the intent to rent them as a short-term rental rather than a long-term.
I think that happened in San Francisco.
So, okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, this is a very exclusionary law.
Yeah. So, back to the board here, yeah.
Further on that thing, thought, under 155-4B, it says the short-term rental, the way currently written in the draft, the short-term rental of hosted, single-family dwellings is permitted. Do, when you say single-family dwellings, do we need to clarify that as part of, or should it be single-family unit? Because a dwelling, I don't know, does dwelling have the same definition as the unit?
Dwelling units, right, yes.
It's in the definitions, if you read it here.
Oh, okay.
Dwelling unit.
Yes, I'll use a dwelling.
Okay, so, so dwellings, doesn't need to say dwelling unit, or...
Well, it should, yeah, you can put that in.
Okay.
So the first section of that dwelling unit refers to 210411, and just, I'll just give you that definition real quick. So dwelling is a structure used as a living quarters for one or more tenants. Yeah, but single-family is defined in that section as a building containing one dwelling unit and designed or used exclusively for occupancy by one family.
Correct.
Okay, just really nitpicking there, designed or used exclusively for occupancy by one family. We don't clarify what kind of quarter it is, so it could have been designed for one family and then split it to two, and it would be all right. Yeah, so a building containing one dwelling unit and designed or used. So I designed it as a one-family unit, then I split it up into 16, and it doesn't matter since I decided the right way.
But when it's containing one dwelling unit, so one dwelling unit is one or more rooms designed for occupancy by one family, or cooking, living, and sleeping. So it's possible you could lean back on that, and the only reason you say designed or used exclusively by one family is because you might have multiple families living in a single-family unit, sharing space, and because it's a single family, and it's a large family, they might allow...
There's a definition of family, don't put this off.
Right.
So it's, it's also in 21041.
I mean, I suppose you could get rid of the word designed.
Well, we have to change the line.
And we have to change the other汉字 code.
But that's our way to bring other changes in here.
So, while you're in there, get the call later, too.
What do you think?
I mean, you could change it to an "and"...
Right, and used exclusively for occupancy by one, no.
And if there is a conversion that was illegal, then you could make them refer to...
So here's the hard part about that, right? If I own a home, and I've got a family in it, and I want to invite another family to live with me, it's going to be close quarters, but I'm entitled to. So it's a design for one family, but there's two families living in it now.
You're not entitled to...
What's that?
You're not entitled to...
I'm not entitled to have two families living in my house?
No, you got to have a, you got to make the definition of family. In the code.
Are you talking like extended family, like Holly's parents and her brother?
Good thing about it, how's that going to be enforced?
Right.
No matter what.
But you have to make the definition of family, which is pretty clear.
Yeah, and statistically speaking, I don't know, are we focusing a little more on a donut hole than a donut?
Probably.
Just, you know, putting it out there, you know, so, in other words, I think really for this workshop, let's really, you know, what are the big concerns? How do we move this forward? What does this look like? You know?
In this instance, the single-family dwelling definition has teeth in the new code, so I think, you know, maybe, Jeff, do you see any downside to removing the design element of the single-family definition or the multifamily definition? Right, the design element doesn't matter, it's how it's used. So a building containing one...
If you look at dwelling, single-family, a building containing, containing one dwelling and designed or used exclusively, you'd rather take out the design.
Yeah, just take out designed or...
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, just so everybody's on board.
Yeah.
Okay, remove the word designed.
Designed.
And then we'll have to amend the other.
Well, that's where it comes in.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not...
Okay, right, it's going to be in that.
And I'm just thinking here, for both two-family and multifamily, that term designed or is embedded in both. I figure if you get rid of that one location, it's good.
Maybe, all those things.
So any, and in the two-family, because that may apply to a couple homes and residences, it's a building containing two dwelling units and used exclusively for occupancy by two families living independently of each other, or two single-family dwellings having a court law in common. So, you know, we don't need the design there either.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
While we're on definitions, so this speaks, Lisa, to your comment on hosted and unhosted. Jeff, is there any benefit that you see to defining unhosted, or by just defining hosted, it leaves...
Well, I think...
Sorry, go ahead. It just leaves everything else as considered unhosted?
What would the definition of unhosted be?
The owner...
It would be any...
Does not live there any time of the year.
Well, no, because you could have owner-occupied, unhosted.
Unhosted.
Well, that's...
For silver.
Right, all right, so...
So the term of unhosted would simply be the absence of the primary owner, right? So hosted is the onsite residential presence of the owner of the subject residential dwelling during the duration of the rental, and unhosted, you could just define as the opposite, the absence...
But you don't really need to, because everything else is...
Everything else is...
There's outlines.
By nature of how it's written, it's excluded.
The only reason to put in the word unhosted, or as to what it is, is when you're reading through the rest of the code, somebody may come across the term unhosted, say, okay, what does that mean? And they go back to it, and it's not there, so then they have to interpret it as hosted.
And where is that, where is that?
Right, and I'm wondering, is it in here or anywhere else?
It is.
Is it unhosted? Yes, right here, number five.
Yep, so, I'm thinking, Jeff, could we put the definition of unhosted in?
Yes, I agree.
I know it's implied.
It's going to make it more clear for people to see it in writing.
Yeah, so it would interpret as unhosted, the absence, onsite residential presence, the lack of residential presence of the owner, or the absence of residential presence.
How, how come?
Okay, say unhosted is not hosted. Yeah, the onsite hosted, where I was coming from. Anything not there and contained in hosted. Okay, fair enough. Under the hosted definition, there's, is there any benefit, or would we need to place the onsite residential presence of the owner of the subject's single-family residential dwelling? And I think by doing that, you limit certain residential dwellings that may be on the second floor, so for example, committing second-floor Airbnbs or short-term rentals in the TDD district, and so if somebody is actually living there as their residential quarter, and maybe they own it straight up, they could be there, and it's not really necessarily a single-family dwelling, it's, or residential dwelling, it's in the commercial district, so. We would, we wouldn't put single-family under the hosted definition, right? We can leave that out, and it's a catch-all group.
Where do you want it?
I was just thinking, under hosted definition, the onsite residential presence of the owner of the subject's single-family residential dwelling, but by doing that, you limit potential other hosted opportunities in non-single-family dwellings. So for example, there might be a...
Right, so that's, there's a question about what the...
Okay.
Do you hear me?
Can, so here's a question, can we have hosted residential dwellings in non-single-family residential dwellings? So this would be, for example, in the TDD district, the upper floor is sold as maybe a condo structure within the primary unit, or potentially, it's owned by the owner-operator of the first-floor retail, right, where they live in the second floor, so they live there. It's not a residential dwelling, but they're living in the second floor, and they want to short-term rental it, whether or not it's hosted or unhosted, and what I'm suggesting is, I think we can leave it off, and it's okay. So by just simply saying hosted is any residential dwelling.
But that would be a business district, though, right? So it kind of doesn't...
Kind of moved, I think we could...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the business district, I mean, where are we going with that?
Right, and we already talked about letting it...
In other words, I really think what's driving this in terms of the depth of discussion is really the impact on the residential aspects...
I agree.
...of our village, and how do we look at that and protect that component? The other districts, you know, that have been delineated in this draft, I think, kind of bring us, you know, they think, well, it's in a business district, you know, no one's really going to be affected in terms of the character of a residential neighborhood.
Right.
And I think that, and it just means we can have a hosted unit anywhere in the village.
Hmm.
Right, it's all the same.
Okay.
Sure, residential or...
Because it's not, it's not limited anywhere...
Right.
If it's hosted.
Yeah.
So we're...
So it would be the owner's onsite.
The owner's onsite.
The owner's living there, sleeping there.
Yep, yeah, that's fine.
So, under definitions, when you're talking about owner, owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, we have the number 184 days there, as you saw from the emails I sent to the board. And what I have discovered, typically, 275 days is the standard for establishing residence. So I'm wondering, if the board would consider changing that number from 184 to 275?
Where do we have 184 from? No, I mean...
Six months and a day.
Oh.
Typically, when you, when you see that... I've always heard six months and a day.
Yeah, me too, I want to stay six months and a day.
Nine-day seems to be what's popping up. Wait a minute, what, I'm, I'm a little lost here, which, give us the, what page, what number, where you're in a definition.
To the definitions.
You're in definitions.
Owner-occupied, single-family.
Okay, okay, you were saying 184, gotcha. Okay.
But you want to up it to 275, what you're saying is standard.
That, no, from what I, I, I sent the board, a number of examples of other municipalities that have set as their standard for establishing residence. So in other words, you're saying you are an owner, to establish that you are that, that owner, you have to be living in, in the structure two-hundred-and-seventy-five days a year. That's, that's in most municipalities.
Well, which means.
Those are the ones that you sent us. Yes, I didn't see anything else that possible.
No, just so I'm.
Which means how many are left to rent, then? Who's got the math in their mind? So if you have to live there two-seventy-five.
No, no, sorry, the two-seventy-five is how many days you have to live there out of the course of the year to be considered owned. How many days you might let them then host a unhosted guest.
Right.
Could be three-sixty-five minus two-seventy-five, but it doesn't have to.
Right.
Meaning, we could let somebody who lives there for six months and a day, one-hundred-and-eighty-four days, only rent out ninety days.
Got it, got it.
Out of the other six months.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so. I'm thinking, for me, anyway, I'd rather just keep it simple, six months and a day, or the one-eighty-four, that's fine, but then limit, if we're trying to limit unhosted opportunities, have that be just by the total number, sixty, ninety.
Which is down here, regulations and control.
What about this scenario?
Yeah.
It's two-seventy-five, that's how we're establishing that you're the primary owner for anything that we're doing.
Yep.
We don't even try to reunite the best of it, if somebody.
Whatever remains, remains.
If they wanna go to.
The ninety days, either way, you're getting the ninety days is really what I'm hearing from you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we don't need to legislate. If somebody's renting out their house for a couple of months while they're in Florida, why do we need to even be bothered with that?
Right. But you're regulating it through saying, six months and a day in our village says that you are not a permanent resident. Right. Am I correct? It's, you, you have to be here two-hundred-and-seventy-five to be a permanent resident within our municipality.
Yes.
That actually is what's up for debate and discussion. Yes. Permanent resident versus a resident in the eyes of New York, for example, is different. What is the sort of legal reason why two-seventy-five is a permanent resident status and not six months and a day?
Six months and a day is a residence.
Okay, it is, okay. So then the two-seventy-five is just what we've seen some other municipalities do.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's sensible, if somebody were deciding, you know, to make an issue out of it, there's a lot of other places across the country that you can point to to say, two-hundred-and-seventy-five days is what they use.
Yeah, but if people wanna make an issue about anything, they can always find somebody else.
Yeah, you can, but I'm just saying, for those municipalities that have been dealing with short-term rentals and have established legislation, it seems pretty universal, two-hundred-and-seventy-five days.
So I think the more relaxed you are from that, the more likely you can kind of, meaning if, if some municipalities require two-hundred-and-seventy-five days, and we're two-hundred-and-seventy, we're more lax, quote-unquote, than they are. So it'd be even more defensible than the two-seventy-five. I'm thinking, for me, it just goes back to the, the voting status thing, which is just, hey, you're here six months and a day, that's your residence, right? That's where you live and reside, and if you're gone to Florida five months out of the year, rather than only two months or three months out of the year, then we're gonna control your ability to short-term rental a home based on the number of days we permit.
Ninety days.
Sixty, ninety, we talked about that, right?
Ninety days is typical.
So I'm, I'm okay with ninety days, and then they need a rental permit if they rent more than thirty, I think it was.
We need to legislate that, if somebody's gone, we don't need to check and everything will thing out, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I would not like everything to be simplified.
Yes, I don't want it to be simplified, straight across where you.
It's like, we're going to Florida, we've got somebody who wants. So I think.
But who's gonna, who's gonna monitor?
If somebody goes to Florida, though, how many months are they there? Are they there four months, do we wanna let them rent for four months? Right, do we wanna only restrict it to three? I'm personally comfortable with upwards of one-hundred-and-twenty days, but the thing is, if that's a long-term rental, nice and easy, so ninety days as a short-term rental shortens up the, the frequency that somebody can rent when they're down in Florida on a short-term basis, but you wanna rent five months when you're gone, right?
Oh wait, let's talk about that five-month rental, so somebody wants to rent five months, we're not talking about the same person that's renting for, what if they have something different every single weekend?
Yes, and then that's a uniquely different situation.
Right, which is where Airbnb comes.
Right, so that's, that's where I think ninety days makes sense.
Because that's, that's a success of Airbnb, they only do weekends.
Yeah, nine, two-hundred-and-seventy-five days establishes your resident requirement, and they have ninety days to rent. They don't even have to be consecutive, it's just ninety days, because who's coming?
Were any of those municipalities in New York State that have the two-hundred-and-seventy-five?
New York City was one.
Well, New York City is a very different animal.
Yes.
Completely different for Airbnbs, is that they're dealing with a major.
But if the board feels more comfortable now Googling it themselves when they get home.
It's sixty.
If it's two-hundred-and-seventy-five.
There's New York City in the.
Ninety days divided by three.
But I think it was. Also, I think Kipsey was one of the ones that pointed out.
That's twenty weekends.
Larger.
Twenty people now.
Yeah, I got it. No, I think it's.
There is Long Beach is.
Hang on one second, yes, Justice, but if more would like to do their own, that's fine. Okay, yeah, Justice, he's coming up with something here.
Long Beach is one of those that seems to mention two-hundred-and-seventy-five days, I, I think we looked at their code the other day, too. In New York.
So where, where are we headed with this thing?
Well, where's my next question? We're down at one-fifty-five-four C, right? Is that where we are, we're talking about this ninety-sixty day thing?
Well, no, I'm, we're still back up with the definition.
Oh, we're still back up into owner occupied, single-family.
I'm good with one-hundred-and-eighty-four days.
I am, too.
What, one-hundred-and-eighty-four?
That's me.
Just what's there.
Well, I didn't, I know, I'm just trying.
So one-eighty-four is the six months and a day.
Right.
So that's a resident in that property, that's their primary residence, they couldn't reside anywhere else. That's by laws where they're at, and so they pay their taxes.
But it gives six months' option of renting.
No, we control that. Either way, we're looking at ninety days, it's just how the approach is made. That's what I was trying to say ten minutes ago. Yeah.
I'm not sure about the ninety days yet, I wanna talk, talk about that a little bit more.
So let's do, let's do one-hundred-and-eighty-four days, keep it at the six months and a day, and now let's talk about how often that single-family dwelling can be rented. Okay, so now we're down at one-fifty-five dash four C.
Yes.
Yep, now we're. Okay, so now we're, we're looking at that. It's the sixty to ninety days.
Yeah, I wanna go back to B.
Wanna go back to B?
I'll finish C.
Okay. Okay. So if we assume every renter is three days, which is a weekend.
Right, a weekend.
Right, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, right? Three into sixty is twenty, that's twenty weekends rented. Twenty weekends rented is essentially five months. It's, for the most part, the entire time they're gone, right? If you're.
Well, it's not over occupied.
Excuse me, one second. That's correct. Hang on, one second, we'll, we'll, we'll get to you. That's correct. I know, everybody else out there thinking, we just wanna kind of follow through the discussion. Give us a minute here. So the idea is, you have a owner occupied, or owner unoccupied.
No, right.
Unhosted.
Unhosted, thank you. Full stop.
It's an owner occupied house, because the owner lives there one-hundred-and-eighty-four days.
Correct.
That is what.
But it's unhosted.
But it's unhosted, thank you. Owner occupied, unhosted, they're down in Florida for slightly less than six months, how many days do we want to allow them to rent, right, on a short-term basis?
Any, Margaret, wouldn't it just make it any basis? Doesn't matter whether it's short-term or not?
Well, in that, in that is for this, that is.
Yeah, for this.
Only for this particular. Okay, so for the ninety days.
So for a thirty-day lease, you're not controlling it.
Yeah, we don't control anything over thirty days.
Except for the rental registry, that's what I control.
Yeah.
So worst-case scenario, let's talk about the ninety days, so that gives people twenty week, twenty weekends.
Yep.
That they can rent their place, twenty weekends, and if they're good, and they get those weekends filled, that means we will have twenty families every year in and out of that place.
So I think that's.
Okay, so that's, that is what I think our residents do not want.
Right, and I, I think, so as, as I'm going back to the two-hundred-and-seventy-five idea, once I started Googling for that specific number, I, I started finding a lot more, so actually Hodgson Ross, in their presentation on regulating short-term rentals, found that they cited the case of San Francisco, so perhaps New York City does that, San Francisco does two-hundred-and-seventy-five days to define the host as the primary resident, meaning a host must live in the unit on property for at least two-hundred-and-seventy-five days a year, so I'm finding that for Long Beach, for San Diego, a lot of places do that, and perhaps.
San Jose.
Wow, and those are bigger communities than.
So people who go to Florida for. Three months and a day. Yeah, I was just going right there.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're out. Right. If they're residents, they are out.
But they can rent by the month.
So why can't we just limit, why can't we just limit the days for those people?
But then that's long-term rental.
Why can't we just limit the days for those people?
So if you go to Florida, if you're a snowbird, and you own a house in the village, and you've lived here, you know, decades, and you wanna be able to supplement your income a bit, you now, because you are not in your house for six months and a day, can't do that. Unless you do long-term, your only solution is long-term rental. In the two-seventy-five, I think you meant to say two-hundred-and-thirty-five. Yeah, sorry, two-hundred-and-seventy-five, sorry.
So that's why I say we come down to the area of the, you know, C, where instead of allowing the sixty or ninety days per dwelling, we shorten it, and maybe do.
Thirty?
Thirty, right, thirty to fifty. And then this way, it cuts down the weekend availability for them to rent, and it just cuts down the traffic of in and out. Because like, again, it's the in and out traffic that is most concerning, I think, to residents, which, to me as well. So if we, if we take it down to thirty days, or that's still many weekends, that's still.
Thirty is ten weekends.
It's ten weekends in one dwelling that somebody could rent in and out, and believe me, at Airbnb costs, ten weekends, you'll make up your whole year.
Two and a half months.
What's that?
Two and a half months.
Right. Everybody okay with thirty days, and that's, so one of the things we talked about very early on in this entire process was creating the right diets, right? The right speedometer is that we can tweak over time, but have the structure set in place that we can have these discussions with residents and talk about, okay, well, maybe we should have a little bit more or a little bit less, but I'm okay starting at thirty, it's pretty restrictive in the residential districts, but. It's gonna always expand it. We can always expand it and grow on it, and it puts, and as long as we've got the right structure in place, if we start at thirty, we start at thirty.
And let's think about this logistically, so our snowbirds, right, they're leaving in the winter. So this is not a huge place to wanna visit in the winter technically, unless, you know, there's a big event or. So I don't see a huge influx of people wanting to come to Pittsburgh all winter. But I still think there should be some tigger rats.
Right.
So I'm, I like the thirty days, ten weekends.
Okay.
Look at these weekends.
I mean, in, in many respects, that's not far off the fifteen days that everybody's permitted just by default. Right now, our rental permit says you need a rental permit if you're gonna rent more than fifteen days. So you could have somebody here who's going to Florida, wants to rent it out for thirty days, and because it's over fifteen, they need a permit, I mean, maybe we should just take our rental permit and turn it into thirty days, and then.
Get rid of that section of code?
Get rid of that section of code. Essentially saying that there's no such thing as hosted or unhosted, everybody's just the same, you're a resident, and you have thirty days of even rent. Extremities, I, you know, I mean, I'm, you know, I, I like things. So, so, so what this does is, if you went that route, you would take the owner occupied, and you'd remove the necessity to have a class, maybe you wouldn't, so what it would do is, it would limit any owner occupied house to thirty days of short-term rentals. Because it's unhosted, I think. Because it's unhosted, and if it's under thirty days, which is the only thing permitted, then you don't need the rental permit, and this code doesn't apply. It would ju, it would be exactly like hosted, single-family dwellings.
How do you force that?
Well, I mean, like any code, in many respects, it relies upon a complaint, if somebody sees more frequent visitation, or.
Or see it online.
Right, see it online, and it's, this is the job of Steve.
The contrary of you would be, as you said five minutes ago, then you take out the template, then you don't have a way to tweak it.
Here's the other part, if you're not requiring a permit, mental permit, where, where does the village liability, where does that, who's going in there to make, because I think, and this was brought up also by the resident who, who wrote to us, and we talked about this before, is any, when it's being used, like a, a B and B, for instance, not in there, B and B, but a B and B, there are certain fire, fire, they have outside of each bedroom.
There's New York State law that kicks.
Yeah, it has happened, so who's going in there to make sure that that's. Steve, Steve does that. But in the case where you don't have to get a permit, because.
Then it's not a rental unit, we don't have any liability. We're not, we're not.
So where's your liability?
Not blessing it. Right, we're not okaying it.
Okay, even though that we've permitted this circumstance to occur, where we have no liability.
We're not, we didn't permit it.
No.
We just didn't.
We are. For right now, sixteen, if you're gonna rent your house sixteen days, you don't need a rental permit. If you increase it to thirty days, you don't need a rental permit, and you're not gonna, and, and we're not gonna inspect you, so it's on you. We're not signing off on it, we're just, we haven't looked at it, do whatever you want, any liabilities on you between you and your homeowner's insurance.
Okay, so that, what you're proposing is that that homeowner, that has lived in their home for two-hundred-and-seventy-five, I mean, whatever days a year is determined, is permitted to rent there, how short-term or long, whatever, thirty days at a time.
Not at a time, because if they wanted a weekend, it, it would equal thirty days.
Equal thirty, up to. Up to thirty days in a six-month period, is that what?
Do we? No, I don't think.
Thirty days annually.
Per year.
So right now, it's sixteen days annually, no rental permit.
And all we're, all, the discussion is, what about thirty day, up to thirty days, no rental permit? That's, that's the only discussion component that we're having, there's, I, I see people are raising hands in the room here. Couple more comments from the board, then maybe we can take some input.
So what, what I'm hearing then is what we had termed before as sporadic rental, in other words, PGA's at town, there's a special event or something, you can rent out your home out of thirty days.
That's different.
No, we, you don't need a permit, you don't need anything else.
Blue is correct, if we make the change in a, in the rental legislature.
Right now, it's sixteen, the debate is, do we turn it to thirty, and scrap this whole unhosted residential short-term rental, and just simplify it to be.
For all rentals.
Anybody in a residential, single-family, or residential dwelling. Turn it to thirty.
And then it would cover an event or rent.
Right, it covers events, it covers when they go to Florida, it covers, you know, whatever, and then that's our number.
Exactly, maybe that's.
Let me take out C.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Please take out C, right, right.
So I have a question before we get to questions. How does the board envision a hosted rental occurring? I mean, what, what's the dynamic gonna be, I mean, you got an owner, the owner's living there, where are the guests gonna live?
They're not gonna live there, they're gonna just come and stay in a bedroom, and they're gonna use their kitchen.
So you're using a bedroom, and they're, they can use the kitchen.
Yeah, in that living room. Whatever, whatever the owner wants.
Well, no, it's not drafted that way, actually. It really should be, short-term rental, hosted, single-family dwelling unit is permitted. Yeah, I guess it works, okay, I was a little worried about it would've worked, okay, nevermind.
You're good, okay.
And what, let's take it as an example, let's say there is a in-law suite in the basement, that it's a shared single-family, it's all open, right, basement flows into the upstairs, there's kitchens and bathrooms in both floors or areas. Somebody could host in that environment.
We have that already, the village.
Right, and they could host unlimited, assuming they're there, and it's designed as a single-family dwell.
You said the eustace is a single-family home.
Correct. So what your new change will make me... This is where Steve, with regards to...
When he comes in and inspects.
And inspects it. So what we have to make sure happens is, and I think the rental permit is still done this way, even if it's hosted, and it's rented for more than thirty days, it needs a permit.
Yeah, yeah, that's already, we're there.
Well, it's sixteen.
But I mean, if we change it to thirty, that's the only change we're tweaking that.
And then that allows Steve to understand if a single-family dwelling was somehow converted inappropriately to a multifamily dwelling where somebody's staying in the basement and in the upper...
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so it's still a shared, open, single-family.
Yep, yep, he's telling that. Any, okay, because I know there were some comments that folks wanted to make in the, in the room here. Peggy, I know you had your hand up earlier.
I did, but...
Do you want, do you want to hold off for a minute, or?
I would like to know how to, how we're going to...
How may I assist you?
I'm sorry. I think you're very thirsty. Anyone else make comment for owner-occupied, hosted, to make sure that the owner is actually there when people are renting.
No, you're going to catch him with the noise, you're going to catch him with it. I mean, if it's not a problem.
No, not noise, just...
If you could call out, if there's no complaints, you won't catch him.
It's passive code enforcement, which is what we, what has traditionally been used in our municipality and many others. It's, it's only, it's only a violation if it's reported to the village, if I'm correct, and then, then the action can be taken. If it's never reported, then there would be no enforcement, because there's no way...
They would know.
Yeah, and that's pretty standard, like even for like noise code violations, anything like that.
If it was reported, Steve, that the owner was not there...
Yeah. He would enforce.
Then he would enforce it.
Yeah.
He'd go to the site, he would, it's like anything, it's like, it's like a stop, stop work order, illegal works, an illegal activity.
So I, I think there's, I believe there's room to improve on our enforcement in the village in, in many regards. I think that what I would, what I would like to see in, in this kind of an item is, is something where if there is a report from a neighbor or somebody else in the village, that's recorded in a transparent way, that is a report that's presented to the board on a regular basis, and then there's a policy where within three days or some set amount of time, the code enforcement officer would do a site visit to verify that the owner is around, and if not, they could follow up, you know, the next day or something. And that's also part of the report that the board would be given a couple times a year or something.
Peggy, I also see the problem is going to be, because most of these places are rented on weekends, and the village is closed, and see...
We, we, we have, we have code enforcement on weekends.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The call comes in, it comes right into our service, and it's forwarded immediately. So we have a hotline, is what you're saying? Yeah, you can call right in, and the code can be enforced, and that has happened in the past.
There is, I think when you advertise for short-term rentals too, you're going to generally see in the advertisement, is it posted or not? I mean, to show up at a place to stay as an Airbnb and to have somebody there on-site would be a little alarming, planning to stay if you didn't know. So I think from just a marketing perspective, you'd be able to discern what the intent of the owner is fairly easily, or at least I would think.
Yeah, you know whether it was a room or the whole house.
And also...
And that's the way Steve is going to be looking at this stuff, really.
And it could be a certain number of violations, and then you, you know, you lose your permit.
His biggest tool is going to be the online advertising, at least.
I mean, Peggy, I think there's going to be always ways to get around regulations. I mean, like, for the Airbnb specifically, they give you the host's number, and you can call and talk to the host, and certainly the host could say online that he will be there, and then when he talks, he'll say, you know what, I'll let you guys handle it for the weekend. I mean, you're going to get stuff like that, but, you know, there's no way we can...
Unless there's a problem.
Unless, again, it's passive enforcement, as I, as I mentioned earlier, you know, that's, that's just pretty much how...
The way they do it, you can't do it.
People are going to have to go through the permitting access anyway, but I'm speaking more now about there are several homes in the village that are, they say they're hosted, but they're not. Maybe it's the ones that currently exist that are the problem.
I don't think Steve has through this rental registration yet.
He's got a lot pulled together on it, though. I mean, he'll, you know, he'll be updating us on that. And, and as far as I know, when I just met with Steve earlier today, we have yet to receive any complaints from any Airbnbs, about any Airbnbs, I should say. So not, you know, in other words, if we don't hear about it, there's nothing to enforce. That's how it works with passive enforcement.
Maybe you just need more information. They might not be complaints, but they might just be observations, is what I...
Just to comment on that too, right now, because we don't have any code...
Right, there's nothing to complain about.
For a complaint to be a formal complaint, it has to be...
That's, you have to violate something. And typically, it would be a noise, noise complaint, for example, which is, you know, that could happen, certainly. And that's already addressed in our code.
Right.
Once you have this complaint...
Excuse me, excuse me, point of order, I haven't recognized you. Give me a minute here. Ward's talking.
I was simply going to say, once you have code in place for short-term rentals, there can be a complaint that a particular residence is in violation of that section of the code.
Yeah, exactly. Once that's in place, yes. Susan, you had your hand up, but, yeah, and then Bob, but Bob, she's still, okay, because I know everybody wants to chime in here.
Susan Loda, 85 South Main Street. First of all, this is a sticky weekend, and thanks for tackling this issue with these workshops. That being said, I think a four o'clock meeting, addressing an issue that is, you know, so important to everybody in the village, I mean, makes it very hard for, for, for people who work during the day, or kids who are in school, and come home. I think this is an inopportune time to have to schedule this meeting, and so I would just encourage for the future, in the end, for the hearing, to schedule that at a time when more residents can actually appear. Maybe people would dark here.
Susan, just whatever, we're going to have public, public hearings where it will be open to everybody, every time.
No, I know, so is this. And these are important steps along the way, and, you know, people have been speaking on behalf of residents, and I think how much more transparent and inclusive that would be if more residents could...
I'd be fine with a meeting, you know, like after dinner, an evening meeting, you know, for people who work, and, you know, because by the time you get to public hearing, a lot of stuff's pretty baked in.
Yes.
And I think really, and again, these are defined as workshops, where it's far more, you know, you want to engage a number of members of the community. I'd even be fine with, you know, like a Saturday something, event, you know, so, again, people who work and they have families, they can schedule things differently. I'm absolutely fine with that. I personally think we should at least have something at like 6:30, maybe, you know, after people get home from work, for another workshop, not, not just a public hearing. You know, I think that would be beneficial to a lot of, more of our residents, you know, nothing more than that, you know. So I, I'm in agreement, actually.
So, and also, I would, you know, I think our society is so influx right now, and I would be, I would caution against any company, kind of based on the snowbird model, because we know there are young families who go abroad for a year or six months, and there just seems to be kind of more flexibility with the, with people being able to work at home or...
More movement, people moving along.
A lot more movement. So anyway, I would just, I think the snowbird model certainly exists, but I think others are being created as well. And finally, I think it would be a great idea, and maybe this has been done, I don't know, but there are Airbnbs in the village, I don't know how many, but certainly when something is happening before the planning board at a, at a location, at an address, the surrounding neighbors are notified of, you know, something is happening at this address. So I think it might be interesting to get real firsthand experience from people who live next door to Airbnbs. There are not that many, I, twenty, I don't know, to fifteen, and so, you know, maybe, maybe that's a neighbor on each side, one in front, one in back, and just, and just send them a letter, like a notification that would occur to other applications, that this is happening.
I like that. I mean, we can invite them to one of the workshops.
Do...
You know, let people, yeah.
Do special permits require notification of surrounding properties?
I think so.
So...
Yes.
It's a public, it's not where there's special hearing is. It's a public, it's where there's a public hearing.
Yep, thank you. Thanks for the input, yeah.
Apologizing for my spontaneous interruption.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my home, 71 State Street. Following up on Susan's excellent idea of informing people, perhaps you would consider as, if we were a variance, a sign that you posted on the property in large letters stating that this property has applied for a short-term rental permit. That way, all the neighbors will see it, not require reads, whatever publication is published, or, and then, that would, that would allow the village to streamline the process, where they wouldn't maybe have to send out with this.
So like a sign, yeah, they do it for, for the other planning boards, Mr. Presrich and stuff, yeah.
Just like for...
Yeah, thanks.
I like that, I agree.
Further, just for clarification, the revised legislation that we've received prior to this, I'm a little confused. I initially was under the impression that in residential zones, there would be no SDRs, but apparently I was wrong. Yes, okay, yes. So we're owner-occupied, right, hosted, so I live there, I want to rent out a room, I can invite somebody in my house and charge for it, so long as it's a shared space and I'm living there, it's, right? If I'm not there, the way we've been discussing it right now, is it would be limited to thirty days.
And you own the property as a...
And I own the property, and I reside there.
As a primary residence.
So you can do a SDR for thirty days. Or is it fifteen?
That's part of the discussion we're trying to have.
We're trying to ground it.
Thirty days right now, I think, is this idea, if I'm not there, but I reside there, my primary residence, I'm gone, for whatever reason, I can rent it out for thirty days, whether or not it's two contracts or thirty contracts. So we're allowing an unhosted SDR or residential...
To somebody who, who owns that as a primary residence.
Yeah, but still unhosted.
Right.
But only up to thirty days, right now.
But I think what, what we were, what we also talked about and wanted to address were people just buying up houses for a business.
Yes.
And that's not allowed.
They won't be able to.
Correct.
So, then further, the, how about the snowbird situation? That's the same thirty days. Thirty? Assuming that they are New York residents in the property here in the village, as soon as they are no longer a New York resident, and this is their primary residence, so let's say they take up residence as an official snowbird Florida resident, they're no longer a New York resident, and they're unable to rent short-term.
Yes, they can do a SDR.
They can rent long-term.
They can rent long-term.
As they can rent.
Or anything over thirty days, which is still pretty short. So we can have any number of unhosted thirty-day SDRs? Yes.
Well, you mean, you mean per...
Any number at any time.
No, we haven't counted the numbers yet, right?
No, that, that, he's right, any number at any time.
At this point...
Every resident tomorrow can decide.
You're right, when you follow that logic.
Oh, I see, I see. So the whole street...
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Could do it.
We can have a mass exodus tomorrow, for the next thirty days, everybody can rent their home.
Everybody's going to Daytona Beach.
Right?
Okay, but I thought we were going to do zoning, where there could only be a certain number of SDRs in a certain neighborhood.
So keep in mind, this is single-family resident, it's my home, right? When I leave, I can rent it out for thirty days.
Right, but again, I...
The, the zero zone is for the non-owner-occupied, right, the commercial style that you might think of.
But that's zero.
That's zero.
Right. What I'm saying, like Bob said, what if ten people on the block...
Yep.
Decide that they wanted Airbnb within, you know, the month of July.
All the same exact period of time.
Yeah.
So right now, based on our discussion, that is, that can happen. And so now, let's, let's, you know, drill down a little bit. It's five after five, 5:30 hard stop. What's important? What, what does that look like for our community? Is that something we want? Is it, is there another way to look at that? Is there a direction we want to give to Jeff about that? You know, let's go through the board, and, you know, let's, Justin, what are your thoughts?
So, I'm, I'm just throwing this out there because I like simple things. We could even further, if we do have some concern about, like, the time that an entire neighborhood would be vacant when there's a big golf competition or something, leave the permit allowance to sixteen days, what it is currently.
Fifteen.
And fifteen, and then, and then leave it there.
And then special permit the rest?
Yes, yeah.
No, I mean, you, you have set it up right now, where there's no special permits permitted in residential districts.
Right, yeah, so it would be fifteen days, and then...
That's it. So here's, let me just share with you why I tend to not, to like to be so restrictive. It's the idea that if you've got a property in one of the districts where it's unlimited, that could be the TDD or the MUVC, and it comes up for sale, right? I want to think about, do I want a, a commercial buyer that then has an unlimited opportunity to rent it as a short-term rental indefinitely, or would I rather have a owner living there and renting it half the time?
In a TDD?
Yeah, because they could. It's just a question of...
It would matter. I just don't have a dog in the fight that way.
Don't really care.
I, I just don't have a dog in the fight. Again, I really, for me, it's only my opinion. It's more about the integrity of the residential areas. That's, that's kind of really where my lens keeps going.
That's my guess.
And how do we look at that, saying, well, if you're here six months and a day, you can still rent it out for X amount? What's the, what are the consequences when we say that that can happen to the residences? Everybody else who doesn't, who's there 365 days a year? That, that's sort of more my lens. Justin, did you want to finish your thought there?
No.
You're holding on fifteen days.
I, I, I... Yeah, as, as this suggestion change, it requires less changes, we can put that out there in two of the public things, and if there's a lot of pressure, if they say, hey, this doesn't allow me to do what I want to, then we bump it up. Well, why change it before people ask us? So that thirty matters, you know, a whole lot.
Pretty broken, don't fix it, is that what you're...
Do we know how many of those fifteen Airbnbs that we have currently are owner-occupied?
No, there's, no, yeah, I think there's, I know of one for sure. Steve would know, Steve would probably know.
Because I'm interested to know that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, that, that's going to really just set a tone.
You know what, I'm going to make that an action item, we'll get that information back to the board and Steve, okay?
How many are owner-occupied?
I think it's one. Did we have anyone online who wanted to speak?
Um, no one, no Q and A, no answer.
Okay, thank you. Any, okay, yes, Bob?
Question comes to mind, since we're really concerned about the residential neighborhoods, why are we allowing SDRs at all in the three residential zones of the village? Why would we have to?
Well, I mean, I think Dave raised some good points, though, in terms of, you know, it's your house, you're living there, maybe you need some supplemental income.
Yeah, but if you went out of town, or went in Florida, or wherever, I can't feel too sorry for that.
Oh, I was thinking of the onsite.
Oh, yeah.
You know, just the onsite ones. That's the one I was thinking of, is the onsite when you're, you're there.
But once again, why do we need SDRs in residential neighborhoods at all, when we have plenty of other zone areas where we could permit them?
You know, I don't know, I...
Is that something we could discuss?
I, I think it's a larger discussion than just, you know, a few people in our community. I think that's really for the community at large, at a, you know, in another workshop, maybe in the evening, or on a Saturday.
It's a good point. I'd like to hear what other people say.
It is a good point, but, you know, it's also, again, we have currently some in residential areas without any complaints, and people, you know, love to, you know, I don't know. I'm not making a case, what I'm trying to say is I want to be able to vet this with our residents in a larger venue than this, because you're, it's a good question to ask. That's, that's, you know, the starting point, but how does this affect our residents, how does this affect our residents, you know, the fabric of a neighborhood, you know? And Susan, you raised a good point about people who buy homes here as second homes, and then they're not here a lot, or maybe hardly at all, and the houses just sit... and then they're not here a lot, or maybe hardly at all, and the house is just sitting vacant. You know, what does that do to our community? You know, they're not a neighbor.
No, but it's...
They're a second home.
...unruly neighbor, potentially.
No, understood, but again, I think, you know, there's larger things to look at, you know, in terms of preserving the fabric of our neighborhood, that's all I'm saying. Yeah, but, you know, all good input, really, it's all good, and all good questions. Yeah, Ty?
This one last call, so do we know what the town legislature is doing in terms of short-term rentals?
Mm-hmm, nothing.
Nothing.
They're not going to do anything?
Nothing.
Yeah.
They're a different element.
Well, I'm just saying, if they prohibit short-term rentals in town, it puts more pressure on the village to...
I've spoken with Bill Smith and they have absolutely no legislation. They do nothing to regulate them, they've never really had complaints. There's only been one complaint at all. Okay, bringing this back to the board, because I want to kind of wrap this up. And let's, you know, any other key points, any significant direction to Jeff? I would like frankly to set up a time where we do have a workshop in the evening for other residents, you know, or on a Saturday or something, coffee and conversation kind of one, you know, it's just something. Yeah. Lily, then Jeff, okay.
Lily, was Jeff about to say something?
He looked like he was. I sense...
The only point was I have not received any direction.
Well, that's what I'm saying, let's wrap, you know, let's start pulling this together, any key points, any? Or do we want to... I mean, I've got a couple of action items here to get back on some things, but...
We've got a number of things to talk about that's specific to the code writing, but...
Okay, but Lily?
Okay, thank you. One of the things I wanted to bring up to the board is talking about some changes to the draft possibly, and that is in the districts, specifically, I think it's mixed use in North Hill Common. We were looking at that, I think it's MUEC, if I'm not mistaken. As part of North Hill Common, I would like to point out backs up to residential. So I think we had a certain number of permits that we were considering for that because it was non-residential. But we wanted to allow by special permit, if someone wanted to open a, run a short-term rental in that district. We would maybe want to be aware of the properties that back up to residential on State Street.
When this says unlimited, it doesn't mean it's a free-for-all. It means we are not limiting the number of special permits. So anyone who wants to rent an upstairs unit, and that's, I'm not making any policy issues, if you want it limited to a number that's whatever you want to do. But right now, anyone, this is just a specially permitted, non-owner, unposted.
Doesn't mean we grant the permit per se. Well, yes, Planning and Zoning Board, Planning Board can be, or Zoning Board, which is going to be giving the special use permits. And so it would come before them.
Right.
Neighbors could come in and comment, that's why it goes before the Planning Board.
Right.
And they are able, in that instance, to accept public comment, because typically they're in charge.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Well, but they should have very specific criteria that they're basing their decisions on. So I guess, based on this point, which I agree with, and as I'm looking at the map, she's absolutely right, maybe we could give the Planning Board some kind of a consideration that says that one of the foremost considerations is not being adjacent to residential property.
I mean, I... Well, you only have considerations of impact on neighborhoods. You already, I'm addressing a member of the Planning and Zoning Board here. That's already a consideration that is always part of the criteria.
I would be more specific than that. I would say that for this particular application, the permit would be granted, would be considered as, we'd consider more the possibility of granting this if it's not adjacent to a residential property.
I don't mind, I'm just sort of looking at Jeff.
Does that hold up? You know, similar to a restaurant, it has 100 feet, 100-foot rule. Yeah, there's a distance criteria, maybe.
Can you add a distance requirement?
That would be, because that couldn't be challenged, then, is what I think. You know, I'm worried about legal challenge. Yeah, Susan, you can have your hand up.
Yeah, but that's good.
Okay.
So distance, we're talking about distance, not give away.
What if we, I don't know, what if we just say 50 feet?
It's usually 100 feet, isn't it? What was that?
100 feet, is it?
A member of the Planning Board would at least say.
I don't know.
What, 100?
Yeah.
Fine, it was 100.
No, there was lots, and, okay.
Good. So we're going to add a 100-foot distance of any short-term rental, non-owner-occupied short-term rental, anything that's the special permits apply.
Abiding a resident.
Abiding a resident, 100 feet or further.
Okay, so Jeff, you just received a direction. I see a hand, yes.
So many of these issues do pertain, or Planning Board members, you know, could be authorized in a dozen comments. So it would be great for a reach out to the Planning Board.
Yeah.
Susan, I did ask that of the board, and we were much in agreement that we were going to do that, but they wanted to have a more meeting before we...
Well, one member of the Planning Board's been weighing in already, so I think the entire board should weigh in.
I think a personal invite from the Planning Board would be part.
It's not just one person on a board, it's an entire board of expertise.
But personal invite from us, I think, would go a long way.
I don't mind, just on that note, I don't mind for our regularly scheduled meeting to just put on the agenda, short-term rental, public input. Yeah, right, public input requested. And then don't have anything embedded, we're not going to have a discussion. Just give people opportunity and a space on the agenda to come and present three minutes of view.
Yeah, I'd like that, actually, in a workshop at night, as I proposed earlier. I think, because I think it's an important, this is big.
Yeah.
And it affects every single resident in the community. And so, we have so much, our agenda for tomorrow, I think, has 15 items. So if you get 10 people with three minutes, you get 20 people with three minutes, okay, so now, I'd rather have a separate time where people know they can come in and focus and be thoughtful and very present and directed, rather than with us with a whole bunch of different, that's all. I mean, I love the idea, but let's keep it, you know.
Yeah, we're thinking of goal.
So a goal, okay, we have 10 minutes left, so a goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing, though, one thing, though.
Goal.
I do want to have, maybe we can come up with some dates for an evening workshop, okay? And then, we could also direct Alexandra, Alexandra to reach out to the Planning and Zoning Board on behalf of the trustees. Great, for comment.
The only comment there is I don't think the code is to the point where we want to send it over to them for comment, because we haven't gone through all of it.
No, we're saying, have them come, just get them, have them to be involved.
Either way.
It's up to them if they'd like to get involved.
Hands off here, yes, yes. Thank you, congratulations.
Even as an informed resident, I think the sign will, you know, at any point, we have something worthwhile to add to this.
Perfect.
Yeah, regardless of where we are in the draft, I think it's just a good thing.
Yeah, a lot of them, you know, it's just draft.
Yeah, well, big words, draft, so that's a good thing.
I have a question about my assignment.
Oh, yes.
Are we telling the Planning Board to think about it if it's within 100 feet? Or we're just saying, you can't have one within 100 feet?
Well, if we say they can't have one, they would have to apply for an area variance if they wanted to have one, right?
Right.
Which I think is probably all right.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, that's why we've got a settlement. Well, not totally, but we should...
So just a couple of quick things.
Yeah, thank you.
I think owner should be beneficial owner, not just the record owner. So in the definitions of owner, right now, it's the record owner of the real property. But I think we should have it be beneficial owner, family, trust, LLC, so it encompasses all one thing. So let's say I own a property and I reside there, but I put it in an LLC, I put it into an irreparable trust, I flip it from myself to my spouse or whatever, all these things are owner. So for me, the definition of owner should be more encompassing ownership.
I'm going to have to explore that a little bit further in my head, what you just said. Because I think what we're trying to establish is somebody who lives on Wisconsin premises.
You can have owner-occupied homes that are owned by irreparable trust, qualified, you know, personal residence trust.
I have family members, yeah.
And so I'm the beneficial owner of that entity, but I don't own it. So you need to...
So you're the voting resident.
Yeah.
Can we have, Jeff, do you want to weigh in on that, maybe clarify that bit?
It's so easy to check the clerk's office records.
Yeah.
I don't know how you... Well, we can flesh it out, you could be specific. The owner is record owner of real property, or, and then...
And then list?
And then do a list of what you want to hit.
Do you want to hand that off to John?
There's definitions of beneficial owner of lots of different things. And I would create, owner should be the record owner and/or somehow beneficial owner thereof. Like whatever, whatever picks up trusts, whatever picks up LLCs, whatever picks up spouse and family, right?
Yeah, there's a number in here.
Record owner including.
Sure, however you want to do it. But I'm just going to hammer out a couple of things real quick.
Seven minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. On those short-term rental special permits, okay. In the case of these special permits, when we grant them to an outside entity, I think it's really hard to grant them just for a year. If we're going to grant them, we might as well grant them for five, because, or maybe even 10. Because if there's violations, we can always take away the rental permit. We can take away, we can't take away maybe the special, well, yeah, you could embed in here, if there's violations, their five-year or 10-year permit is now reduced to six months, right? And then it's up for renewal. So I'm just, I have a hard time, if I was coming in to invest in a property in the TDD or Chain Place area, and I wanted to sink some money in and make it nice and have some people come, one year, looking at this, no way.
So let me just think about that, because we would have, if they're on the rental registry, there would be an inspection every year. How do we cover the costs?
On the rental registry.
They have to pay for the rental.
Well, but if you're renewing your permit and you get the inspect, if you don't renew your permit, you can see where I'm going.
What I'm saying is the rental registry will pick up the cost necessary to cover the rental registry. But the special permit, the ability...
Only for the special permit.
Only for the special permit.
Only, yes.
There's no reason, there's no reason not to have the special permit be longer, because it allows the person to presume the ability to invest. And then you can always take that right away of renting it by addressing the rental permit because of violations that occurred. Right, so it's still a temporary thing, but it's not so at risk.
Well, it's like getting a special use permit for a restaurant.
Yeah.
It's like, it just...
The question is whether or not we want to encourage or discourage these things.
Well, I think in certain districts, there's a unique development and opportunity. And I think that's true of residents, too. When I have people coming into the village, I'd like to have a short-term rental that they could potentially save. And I think there's development opportunity or investment opportunity that could be creative in having some short-term rentals in the community, especially if we're basically kicking them out of the residential districts.
I don't, I mean, so I just raised the...
Yeah.
No, it's good.
So I mean, I like the five or 10 years. You could write something in there that says with violations, it immediately is reduced to a...
Certain number of violations within, you know, within the year, within a, you know, I mean, you could definitely...
I'd compromise with two years. And the reason I say that is because when first, as you said, as time goes on, we can tweak this. But since this is all new and has never been tried yet, we don't know what the, you know, what the situation is going to be and how it's going to play out. So that would reduce the amount of concern somebody might have about signing, at least, I don't know what the circumstances would be. But I, when we first started special use permits, we made them for one year and they would have to come in and renew so that we could, as a board, review, had there been any issues, you know, what occurred, and then, and go from there.
So let me ask Jeff a question. Let me ask Jeff a question.
Not five years.
If a one-year special permit is granted, is it presumed that it would be granted again in the second year if no conditions have changed?
Right, so it's not presumed. If the one-year permit is granted, then you would have, right, show a change, some change in circumstances that would allow you not to grant it.
Which could be violations.
Well, that's more of the revocation.
Okay, so give an example where they could deny a special one. And I'm sort of tackling this...
After they change conditions.
Change in conditions. So I'm sort of tackling this from the vantage point of an investor coming in.
Sure.
Right, if I'm looking at a one-year special permit, or even a two-year special permit, it's not worth me taking a property that might be a little rundown, not currently able to be invested in, to turn into a rental.
And you don't want to discourage investing, you know, because there's stakeholders putting money in to invest and get tax dollars.
If you think about it, they're going to apply.
I'm sorry, I'm just thinking that there are opportunities of improvements for properties that may only occur in certain districts as a result of the profitability of it, where a short, where a long-term rental may not encourage that. And if we find people are coming in with longer-term permits with too much veracity, and there's just too many of them, we can then shorten it up to maybe be less. But I would rather encourage a little bit of opportunity of investment, at least on the front end.
So you're not, if you're doing what you're talking about doing, you're not going to improve the property until you get the special permit. So if somebody applies for the special permit, maybe it takes a month and a half, you already 10 and a half months, you only have 10 and a half months left.
Or a year.
And then you got to do the improvements, and it might be done.
Then you got to get your money back.
Yeah, so you're looking for, how do you get that reasonable return?
It's all good to tell somebody, well, they couldn't revoke it if there are any change in position, or conditions. However, it doesn't feel real solid for an investor.
Yeah, I agree. But I think 10 years is all of a sudden.
I think so.
Five is a five.
I would use three to five.
I'm fine with five, and keep in mind, this is the most important thing, really, to your point. If there are violations, the rental permit can be revoked.
Yeah, Steve would bring that one back to the board.
And then the special permit, it doesn't matter anymore, if they can't rent it, because they don't have the rental permit.
Yeah.
Two-minute warning.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's wrap this up.
I have one thing, real quick. Jeff, there's nothing in the grandfathering in of the current...
There is.
I didn't see it.
Two years somewhere, I put it in.
Does anybody know what it's under?
I did see it.
I did see it, I know, somewhere.
Okay, all right, as long as, I know we've talked about it. Oh, here.
154.
You find it, she found it.
155 for E, I think.
Yeah, I got it.
And if I may, this is not the hardship appeal with the two minutes we have left. The only thing that I want to be able to be appeal, not a hardship appeal, is the two-year period of time. And I think they should only be able to appeal it once, and at most get an extra year, but that's it. I don't want a hardship appeal embedded in here where they could persistently come before us and say, hey, I'm not profitable, I invested this, I need this, I need this, I need this, and I can't rent it any other way, or whatever. For me, I think this is just, you're appealing the two-year, you can get an extra year, but after that, we're done. And in this instance, it's written where you can appeal Section C, Section D, Section E, and it would be my preference to be much more restrictive.
Yeah, I agree, because it's time to...
I don't want to appeal all the different...
My goal was to make this a lot more protected, to make the legislation safer. Actually tie it to area variance standards and use variance standards. I had tied the snowbirds to area variance and to profit people for use variances. Then you've made yourself really protected, because they got another level of administrative review. And it's tried and tested court standards about what you, people on the board apply.
Yeah.
That was the reason we did it. And that was just for protectability and the taking of them.
Is there any way we can tighten it up a little bit?
Yeah, I think so.
More, I think it's too...
Well, no, I mean, you decide what you, who you want to do. Frankly, it is by having it outside the zoning code, you have not made it, no, so... So any decision is building, there has to be a decision building inspector, like, or code enforcement. You can or you can't, right? And then that decision is appealable to ZDA. When you add the area variance, the use variance factors, then you've given the ZDA clear guidance on how to do it. But you can tighten up who you want, what you want to do to go to the area variance and the use variance. You may not want anybody with the area variance, you may only want the people who are allowed to continue for two years to be able to do a use variance, but when you do that, I think you would, sorry. I don't think you want to limit it, say, you only have one more year.